Hi, welcome to the Shepherd Podcast. Thank you for watching. We like to use this as an opportunity to introduce you to people in our church, our school, our childcare, our ministry at Shepherd of the Hills, people that I think you'd like to get to know better, leaders in our congregation. And I'm really excited to introduce our guest for today. We have three different boards in our church that oversee the ministry. We have a Board of Directors that oversees the business end of things, how things run, a Board of Elders and Deignesses that oversees the spiritual life of the congregation, and then we have a Board of Education that oversees the ministry of our school and childcare. My guest for today is our recently elected chairperson for the Board of Education. Her name is Stephanie Wies. Stephanie, welcome to the podcast.
Thanks for inviting me.
You're welcome. Thanks for making time. I know you have a busy schedule, working for Habitat for Humanity, and we'll talk a little more about what you do, but just wanted people to get to know you because you're sitting in an important seat, our school and childcare ministry. We always say that the school is our number one mission, and so that's just always been such a big emphasis here. And what you're doing now is our board chair for the school. It's going to be really important to oversee the ministry there and to help things to go in the right direction, especially in these very complicated times.
Yeah, what a time to come in, right?
That's right. But you are the perfect person. God always has the right person in mind. So let's just talk a little bit about you first of all. Can you tell us about your background? You're not originally a Texan, but you got here as fast as you could. Is that right?
I'm from Pennsylvania. I grew up in Pennsylvania, in eastern Pennsylvania, north of Philadelphia, so kind of right between New York and Philadelphia. And my parents and my brother live there. My parents still live there. My brother lives up in New York State now with my two nephews and his wife. So that's my immediate family. Obviously, my husband and I live here. I moved to San Antonio back in 96, so I've been here about 25 years.
Okay. So all of your upbringing was Pennsylvania?
Yes. Yeah, Pennsylvania, and then lived in Georgia for a little bit, and then moved to Texas.
Okay. And tell us about that journey. How did you end up in Texas? What brought you?
Right. So Pennsylvania, after I graduated from high school, went to Muhlenberg College. It's kind of like a Trinity, a small private school in Allentown. And a lot of my friends at Muhlenberg loved Habitat for Humanity as a ministry. They went on all kinds of collegiate challenge trips. They'd go on spring breaks. I listened to it, thought it was great, but really didn't spend a lot of time thinking about Habitat. After we all graduated, I was starting to look at what I wanted to do. And I was an English major and knew I wanted to do something to be super productive, wanted to work with people, kind of thought about going to law school, but really it was kind of in that in-between deciding what I wanted to do right after college. And a friend of mine, who was part of the whole Habitat group, moved down to Georgia because Habitat International's headquarters was in Americas, Georgia. And when he got there, he realized there was this neat job in corporate development, and he said, hey, you might want to come down here and check it out. And so I went. I was actually a volunteer for two years, and I worked with Habitat International at the headquarters in Americas, Georgia. So that was probably my first big uprooting. I was pretty much a Northeasterner at heart. I thought I would live somewhere in the northeastern New England. So just liked the adventure of living in Georgia and doing something a little bit different. Really fell in love with Habitat while I was there. And ended up, long story short, ended up in San Antonio taking a job with, couldn't volunteer forever. Was volunteering when I was in Americas, Georgia. But then essentially, I looked for a job at a Habitat affiliate. And in 1996, I came on to San Antonio, and we were celebrating our 20th anniversary. So I came on and really coordinated the project to build 20 houses in two weeks, and coordinated the volunteers and the public relations and that part of it. So ended up making San Antonio my home.
Wow. Now, you said you were a volunteer for two years in Georgia. Were you working a paying job at the same time?
No. So I was a stipend. So I was living in volunteer housing, and it was kind of like an extension of college in that I was working, I was getting great experience because I was working with a lot of Habitat International's donors and people across the country, got to really shadow a lot of great projects and see what they were doing. But basically, had a very small stipend and housing taken care of. So I learned how to live very lean for those two years.
Well, you were really a living and breathing Habitat for two years. I mean, you immersed yourself in it. And so you can, you know, from a leadership standpoint, you can say, hey, I've done it. I've spent the time very involved myself. So you have that background to go off of as well, being very hands-on.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. So you got the position in San Antonio, 20 houses in two weeks. Is that right?
So that was a big, big jump of faith. And, you know, at that point, I thought, well, I could do Georgia. Georgia wasn't my place long-term, but I thought, you know, I really wanted to work with Habitat. I didn't think it would be a career. I thought it would be something that, you know, I was kind of looking for my next adventure. And came here and just enjoyed putting that project together and really enjoy San Antonio, but really liked working with people, liked doing the fundraising, liked doing the public relations. Yeah.
What were some of the biggest changes between living in Pennsylvania, living in San Antonio?
Well, the heat, that's one thing.
First on the list.
I know when my parents came down and visited that first summer, they came down for a couple of weeks. And I was a frugal, just out of college kid, so I think I didn't want to turn my air conditioner, you know, very high. And I remember my dad coming in my apartment, and he's like, I will pay you to turn your air conditioner up more. So I think that's, the biggest thing that I miss is seasons.
Yeah.
I miss seasons. I miss the food, but I love the food here. So it's just different.
What kind of food do they have there?
I miss the really good Italian food. I miss sandwiches are different. You know, there are more hoagies. And so lots of, lots of choices. I like the Chinese food better there, but that's just me.
Okay.
There's great food here, too.
I've not been to that part of the country before. Been to some states nearby, but so Pennsylvania, all right. And so you came to Habitat, you started with that initial project. What's, what are you doing now? And were there other positions that you filled before you had your current position there?
So it's kind of been a slow evolution of how Habitat's grown. So the first year, I was kind of the coordinator, the manager for the project of building the 20 houses. I didn't do the construction side of it, but I did kind of the other overall management of people and resources. And so after that, I became the volunteer director, and I was onsite a little bit more, working more hands-on with our volunteers and our families. And that's really what I lacked at Habitat International, because everything was over the phone and the internet. We did have the internet back then. But, you know, it was all very, you know, very remote, because obviously, we were just in southwest Georgia, and everything else was going on other places. But, but I, when I came, when I, I wanted to work hands-on with people. So worked as a volunteer director for a while, and then slowly kind of turned into our fundraiser, realized that the next big challenge, what we needed as an affiliate to grow, was really someone who could put the partnerships together, put the relationships together, and build more homes. So I kind of gradually went into that, into that role, and have been in that role, growing throughout the years.
Yeah. Can you give us an idea of how things have grown? Like, how many partners did you have when you started versus now? How much financial support then versus now? What kind of growth have you seen in those areas?
Sure. I know we've, I would say we probably have as many churches. We work with more than 100 churches in the San Antonio community.
That's a lot.
At that point, we really didn't have a staff member devoted to that. Now we do. So we've been able to grow in that sense. But Habitat's been, we've been blessed that we've gotten to work with so many different types of people, individuals, churches, businesses. At that point, we probably had a $1.5 million budget. Now we have about a $12 million budget. So at that point, we were building 20 homes a year. Now we're building 50. So we've kind of been at that 50 level of homes for several years now, and hope to expand.
Great, great. You know, as we're talking, I'm making the assumption that everybody understands what Habitat for Humanity is and what they do. And we know that you guys build houses, but this is a chance to explain a little bit more. Can you tell us beyond that, like what the mission is, what's the purpose behind what Habitat does?
Sure. So what Habitat does is we work with very low-income families, families that need affordable homeownership. And we help them buy and build their very own homes. So there are families that come to us, their income, I would say, right now, their income is about $30,000, $32,000, $33,000 a year. So they're coming to us with a lower income. They would not have any other ability to buy a home on the market. They would not be able to afford a home that's out there. So they come to us, we accept them based on their need, based on their ability to pay for that mortgage. Their homeownership mortgage is going to be about $675 a month, including taxes and insurance. So super affordable.
Sure.
And then their willingness to partner is really the reason that I love Habitat, is we work with families who want to help themselves. So they get accepted into our program because they want to help build their home, and they want to work with everybody to do that. So they build, and they also, they do something called sweat equity, and they also get to, get to help, get to do homeownership education classes. So they go through the whole, yeah, they do about 16 classes where they learn how to be successful homeowners, because they're really first-time homebuyers, and they're extended families.
Right.
And so they do that, and then they, they work through the process. We get the community together, folks like lots of individuals, lots of businesses, certainly Shepherd's been involved through the years a little bit. So we try to get the community together to help our families build homes.
Wow. 16 classes on homeownership? What do you talk about in just a few of the classes?
So credit counseling, make sure that they take care of their credit. We don't want families putting their dollars under their mattress. So we do a lot of financial literacy classes, how to save, how to take care of all of that, conflict resolution, how to get along with your neighbors, property taxes, everything you or I need to know to own a home.
Wow, that's really comprehensive.
Great classes. And then the best thing about Habitat is we sell them the home at 0% interest. So if family buys the home, once they've gotten it built, once we've worked with everybody, and then they purchase the home with a 0% interest mortgage. So that's what makes it really affordable to them.
Okay. You know, as we're talking about the work of Habitat, I'm not hearing a whole lot about nails and hammers and boards. You're talking more about people. And I'm going to assume that that's, you know, that's what you're most passionate about, is seeing people have these opportunities.
Absolutely. We work with amazing families. We work with amazing donors and volunteers. So I am blessed, like you are, to be able to really work with amazing people every day and to help families work hard to get a better life.
Yeah. And now, do people need to be a part of an organization like a church? Or can individuals sign up to be a part of it?
It can be anyone. Yeah, you know, little kids can come out. Your little guys could come out. We have something called a Joshua Build, where sometimes a group will get together and build the walls of a house, and anyone, any age can come out and hammer some nails in, or write their name on a board. But we have opportunities for folks to work onsite, work in our offices. So yeah, lots of great, lots of great opportunities.
Okay. And to get involved, someone, what's the process to get involved?
Then go to our website, habitat essay.org, and probably the best way to get started there. Anyone's welcome to call me, too.
Okay, great. Thank you. So lots of good stuff about Habitat. A little more about you. So you came here for the job. Tell us about Dale.
Okay. Well, he was part of the package with Habitat, because he was actually one of our volunteers who I met when I was the volunteer director. So it was my second year here in San Antonio. I had known of him, but he was one of our volunteers. He came out every weekend, and he came over and we started talking, and we ended up going out and dating, and we've been married now 21 years.
Congratulations.
So he obviously brought me to this church. He's been a member longer than me. He's probably been here 30-plus years.
Yeah, long time.
And I had grown up Catholic, and when I moved to San Antonio, I wanted to go to a church. I didn't necessarily want to go to a Catholic church. So I had actually been exploring and looking at some different churches and trying to figure out what, what kind of felt right, and what felt like home. And we started dating, and I came here. And actually, one of my first services was when we went from the old church to the new one, which is now not there anymore.
Yeah.
But that was one of my first, in fact, was that, that may have been, no, I went to Easter service in 96, and then my first service was then.
Wow, what a great time to come in.
Yeah. And I thought, well, this seems like a pretty good place.
Absolutely. Definitely a time of a lot of momentum and energy to come into it. That's great. You mentioned you had a background in the Catholic Church. Don't you also have a relative who's a church musician?
I do. My cousin's an organist.
Yeah, yeah.
And my sister-in-law, Dale, has a sister who's an ELCA Lutheran pastor.
That's right. Yes, you guys have a few church work connections in the family.
Absolutely.
Well, you've become almost like a staff member here. You've been so involved in the ministry, stepping onto the Board of Directors several years ago, and now onto the Board of Education. And so you've gotten very involved, and you've gotten to be a part of the ministry at a behind-the-scenes level, seeing how everything works here. First of all, when you came to Shepherd, you know, you experienced those things at Easter and when the building was opening. And since then, what do you love most about Shepherd?
I love the people. You know, I think it's the same, same with my job. I'm a people person. And I just think we have amazing people. I think we have been able to do a lot here with the school, with the church, in a very no-drama fashion, I hope. And I just, I love, I love the people that we worship with.
Great people. I agree with you 100% on that one. We have great people here. So you began your board service before serving on the Board of Education. You were Board of Directors for many years. What was it like serving on the Board of Education? What did that teach you about the church?
You know, I really just started on the Board of Education. You meant the Board of Education?
I'm the Board of Director.
Okay, okay.
Board of Director.
So I saw a lot of, I saw more the staff side of things when I was on the Board of Directors. So I really enjoyed that. I felt like it was a good opportunity. We wrote some policies about the facilities and how we did things. So I kind of enjoyed the ability to be able to help bring experiences from the outside, to be able to help the church. Certainly, we saw, saw a lot of different projects and issues throughout the years when I was on the board. And I just felt like I served with great people and were able to, I thought it was also an interesting time. It was, when I first started on the board, it was a transition from Pastor Dan to you. So I also enjoyed, you know, kind of seeing that transition and having the board help support that transition.
Yeah, and that's a good word. The board's been very supportive. I've always felt like our congregational leadership, they've just always, they've been wonderful resources, and they've always been the biggest cheerleaders for myself and for everybody else who's involved in the ministry. So we have, we've had great board members over the years, including yourself. You served as vice president of the congregation as well. And then you stepped back into an at-large position when your time as vice president was over. And then it was during that time as an at-large member of the Board of Directors, I remember Sue Gary, our principal, somehow she was a part of a meeting perhaps that you'd been involved in, and she asked, you know, would it be possible to have a conversation with you about Board of Education? And I think that was even before we knew about your academic background, your master's degree, which was a really great fit. So I guess, first of all, can you tell us a little bit about your educational background? Because that was just such a great fit with the Board of Ed.
So, so actually, before I started working with Habitat, I really did a lot of things on my college campus. I was super involved in the student council, and even in things that the Board of Directors was doing. And I just became interested in, in education and the whole higher education experience. I wanted to bring that experience to other people outside of just middle and upper class. I felt like everyone needed to benefit from a good, solid education. So when I moved to San Antonio, I also started getting my degree in, a master's in higher education administration. So it's kind of an adult in higher education. Paul Westmeyer was, had been a member here, and he was one of my professors at UTSA. But anyway, I got my master's in that, decided to stay with Habitat. I didn't decide to go the college path of being in the college administration, but I do have that background in education. And while I haven't dealt so much with the K through 8, I do feel that education is such, such a strong, necessary component of someone's life to be able to make it successful, along with homeownership.
Well, yeah, because you teach 16 classes on homeownership. I mean, education is educating them as a part of what you do.
Absolutely.
And now you're really going to get to apply some of those things in a new setting, too. Board of Education, thinking about how a school operates. Have you already thought about how, you know, and I know it's been a few years since you went through all the coursework, but how that background will come into play in what you're doing now with the Board of Ed?
Absolutely. I think, obviously, I draw from that. I draw from some of my management experience at Habitat, you know, and just looking at what do we already do great, and how can we make it even better? And how can we, you know, how can we streamline some things that we do or don't do well?
Yeah. And there's really a lot in common between what you do at Habitat and what's going on here in terms of running a nonprofit organization. I mean, there's things like fundraising and, you know, working with volunteers. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we have in common there. So you agreed to serve on the Board of Education. What was your thought process when you were asked to go from Board of Directors to Board of Education?
Well, obviously, you and I had talked about it. I think the school is such, I knew a little bit about the school. Obviously, I learned a lot more serving on the Board of Directors. I have great faith in Sue Gary. I think she runs a great school. I know there's some great staff and some great teachers. And I've heard a lot of just testimonials from, from students, you know, people who I've seen their kids grow up, and they're off doing amazing things. And so I know the school has always been a great resource for people. And I know that great people come out of it and do great things. So I just really wanted to be a part of that. I felt there was already a basis there, or I probably wouldn't have gone in that direction, but it seemed like a good new challenge.
Yeah. So you, you were only on the Board of Ed for a few months before we had an opportunity to elect our next board chair, Terry Rush. Served faithfully, was term limited, and did a great job. So you're following her good work, and you agreed to serve in that position. Can you think of any specific goals or hopes or dreams, things that you hope to accomplish, or you hope to see our school accomplish in the next few years?
I think one thing that, you know, we, everyone wants to know how the school is growing. The school has grown throughout the years. You know, it started with very small numbers, and obviously, we kept, and I just learned a couple of weeks ago, when you and Sue were telling me, that she was the one that actually expanded it, I think, to the like, the fifth and the sixth grade.
She built up a junior high.
Yeah, it just started K through, K through four or five, and then, you know, and then she kind of helped it grow. So I think that momentum, you know, I think, obviously, we're a K through 8 school, but I want to see more students benefit from the education that we provide. I want to see more, more students, more people be brought to Christ. Obviously, it's our great mission, because it also brings families to our church. And I think that's probably my biggest goal. I would hope that that's, that's the biggest goal of the school, too, other than just providing an amazing education.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we talked about the opening. It's a challenging time for churches, for Christian schools, for a lot of people, a lot of different businesses. You know, just would love any reflections you have on, you know, what do we really need to be focusing on right now as we're coming out of, or still in the midst of COVID? You know, we've talked about charter schools having an impact on private schools. I mean, there's a lot of challenges that are new challenges. Just any reflections you might have on how does the school navigate those new challenges in today's day and age?
I think, you know, from everything that I've heard, especially with COVID, you know, I think just going to the virtual education system and having it be where teachers were teaching remotely, I mean, it sounds like they've done an amazing job. But I think really trying to know that it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all. I mean, obviously, we have to deal with a lot of regulations right now. Obviously, COVID is a very real problem, and we need to figure out how to, how to keep children safe, how to keep staff safe. And I think we're in for a bumpy ride for a while. I know God will see us through that, but I know he also gave us a free will to make really good decisions and use our resources wisely. So I know, I know that's a challenge, because I think every day, Sue is just seeing new regulations come out, and how do we do this? How do we do that? And then two weeks, it could be completely different. So I do think the school and childcare are just running, 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 trying to figure out how to, how to make all of that work. I don't know how it's going to work for this next year.
Right.
You know, I'd love to say there was a one-size-fits-all solution, but I know there's not.
Right.
There's going to be kids that can't come into classes. There's going to be kids that do want to come into classes and need to. So I think that's going to be our biggest challenge right now, is how to keep, and I think, I think the staff really have done an amazing job. I think they've spent a lot of time talking to parents, and not just, and I say talking, because I think they were really talking. They're not just sending emails. They're not just, you know, they're not just email, or they're not just doing social media with them, but I think they're really picking up the phone, calling and saying, what is going to work best with you? How do we make this, you know, how do you, how do you keep your child at Shepherd and have this be successful for your family?
Yeah, that personal touch is so huge. I mean, you don't just want an exchange of information, but there's nuance that comes out of that kind of conversation. I appreciate your emphasis on, you know, we're not only educating the kids, but keeping them safe is becoming a much bigger conversation than it's ever been. I mean, we have security officers on campus, so safety's always been important. But now, safety in terms of transmission of germs is just something we have to think about more, and we never did before. Those issues, and really the whole picture of the school, what is the role of the Board of Education in the school? So we know we have a principal, we have staff. What does the Board of Ed do?
I think the Board of Ed's role, I think any board that I've served on, their role has been as, as a policymaking oversight. They're not the day-to-day person coming in. You know, the Board of Directors wasn't coming in every day telling you how to do your job. They weren't telling Melody how to do her job, or any, you know, they were, they were overseeing, creating policy, hearing what are the problems, what are the things that we need, what are the holes? You know, how do we kind of fit all of that together and make everything work? So I think, you know, we have a new board. We have a lot of new people that are going to be coming onto the Board of Education. I think our big job right now is listening and having the staff tell us what they need, especially to get through this COVID time, because we don't know how long it's going to be.
Right.
But definitely, we're not going to be in the weeds, because we already have all these great staff that are already working with everyone hands-on. But our hope is to be able to provide oversight and be able to provide guidance and, you know, and sometimes just someone to talk to. So a little bit of all of that.
Yep. Those are very important roles. We've talked a lot of business. We've talked Habitat. We've talked school. A little more about you, and just want to ask you your personal faith. How has your faith in Jesus helped you in your life and your journey that you've been on in your life?
Okay. I grew up going to church, so I always had a strong faith in Jesus. I think as most college students do, they kind of probably, I still went to church, and I was, I still was involved in a lot of Catholic activities at church, but I probably didn't spend a whole lot of time thinking about my faith as a college student, as probably a lot of college students don't. I think you're kind of at a new time in your life and out of your routine of home. I think what really brought me back to it was, was working with Habitat. One thing we didn't talk about with Habitat is Habitat's very much a Christian organization, and we're founded on Christian principles. And Habitat's founded on the idea of not charging interest. You know, the Bible says not to charge interest, not to profit from, from, from the poor, and to work with the poor and to tithe. And so I kind of, I really learned a lot of those principles hands-on with the work. And especially when I lived in Georgia, a lot of the other volunteers, a lot of the other people that I came into, you know, who were in my circle of friends, were exploring. They were always looking at different churches, and I remember going to And I remember going to, um, an AME church when I was in Georgia and that had been the first AME church that I had been to. And I thought that was interesting and.
For those who don't know, AME stands for?
Um, African Methodist Episcopal.
Episcopal, yeah, yeah.
So, um, so yeah, it was a predominantly black church and they're singing all kinds of, of great songs that are from their culture. And, um, that was new to me. And, um, so I learned, I enjoyed learning about that. You know, went to, to a lot of other Protestant churches and, um, and I think really just the, the whole process of, of working with Habitat and, and putting your faith into action, I think brought me, um, to a, a stronger place, um, with God. And then, um, moved here to San Antonio, looked around at a lot of churches. This is before I knew Dale. So I was already kind of looking and, um, but didn't really feel any strong connection, didn't know someone that went to one of those churches. So it was great to, to be able to have him introduce me to Shepherd.
Sure.
And just felt right.
Yeah, great. Yeah. So you've been able to put your faith into practice in a lot of ways.
I hope so.
Yeah.
I hope so. I, I, I think, um, Habitat tries to provide that to people. And, um, I hope I've been able to do that through the years too.
Yeah, great. The last question I had is what do you do for fun?
What do I do for fun? Um, I like to travel. So, um, so that's, um, the, the pandemic has, has kept us away from that a little bit. But, um, I, I really love to travel. Um, and, um, I love to see other places. Um, I try to see my parents a couple of times a year. So I get to spend time in the northeast. I love when we get to do overseas trips every now and then, um, but, but love to travel. Um, I like to run. I'm a tennis player, haven't played tennis in a while, but, um, but yeah, um, we have a dog. We have a rescue dog that we got, um, at the beginning of the year. So, um, so yeah, we spend a lot of time on dog walks and things around town.
You got your dog as a puppy?
She was a year old.
Year old, yeah, yeah, rescued. Yeah.
A rescue dog.
I think I remember you telling me when you first got the dog.
Yes. She, um, in fact, she ate my homework. She.
Yes.
She, um.
Really happened.
Ate most of my, um, Sue Gary had, had staff prepare this great folder for me with, um, with all these great things about the school. And I had them and I had looked through them. And then, um, once we, um, were at work one day, the dog got past the barrier and pretty much ate it all up.
My dog ate my homework. It is true.
She ate my homework. I have pictures to prove it, but, um, but yeah, we like to do, um, we live downtown. So, so we like to explore a lot downtown and, um, like to go to plays and, um, so enjoy San Antonio.
And that's King William area, right? That's pretty cool to live downtown area.
It is. It's a, um, we, we actually live in a, um, in a house that we were able to, um, it's an old loft that we were able to kind of convert into a, a townhouse. So we live there and, uh, love it. So.
Cool.
Yeah.
Great. Well, Stephanie, it's been great getting to visit and for our audience to learn more about you. Thank you so much. This is your second interview of the day. You already did one with the news media at Habitat, so.
I did. This one was without technical issues, so I'm happy for that.
At least as far as we know.
As far as we know, right?
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for your time and it's been great having this conversation.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And thank you so much for watching the Shepherd Podcast. If you enjoyed this, I encourage you to forward it to somebody, to share it with them so that they can enjoy it too. And please tune in the next time. God's blessings to you. Have a great day today.